This meeting is held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board's Secretary. Please call us to order, Arena.
All right. Daniel Harris. Eric Gallopo.
Here.
Brittany Ashman.
Here.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Here.
And welcome new member Jill Potter.
Here.
Russell Lewis. Chris Avaloni.
Here.
And Timothy Slick.
Here.
Thank you.
So I would like to echo Arena in welcoming our new members Jill and Tim. I hope you enjoy this incredible process we're involved with. It's one of the more exciting boards that you can be on and good luck understanding everything that's intense. We just have some couple of issues. First, if anyone's here for either 900 Cookman or 1503 Park or 300 302 First Avenue, these applications will not be heard tonight. They're all going to be carried. So, we are hearing Valario, but probably not till about 7:30 when our co-chairman can show up. He's a little busy right now, so he's gonna be a little late. So, first off, I'd like to approve the minutes of August 6th. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Do you all in favor?
Aye.
Except for our new members Jill Potter and Tim Slick.
We need five members to do that?
For the...
That's fine.
For the minutes?
Majority of the board can adopt the minutes.
Okay. So, we have some resolutions. Actually, should we do the oath of office first for Jill and Tim and then...
Hold on.
They didn't tell us.
Oh, that was quick. Okay.
Now, your oaths are in the file.
I'm glad to hear it.
Yes, they are on file with the planning department.
As well as certifications from both.
Oh, we can do the certifications.
Okay.
Both new members have listened to all of the papers for Advanced Development Group and Valario office and reviewed the consensus.
You have to sign that you've heard all of these.
That is correct.
Yes, please. Yes.
Thanks for the two applications.
All witnesses.
And I've already heard backlash. The public. No diversity.
Thank you. She only gave me two.
I'll make copies.
That's okay. You only need one?
Yeah, I also need one. No, 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 there's one of each and I'm gonna make three copies. One missing.
I get it.
I appreciate both your efforts to hear those.
Yes, thank you very much.
I'm sure it was quite arduous and long. Wait till you get to the charter school.
You just had to binge-watch it. It's like binge-watching what we've experienced watching in episodes.
Definitely was binge-worthy.
I'm not sure listening is the same thing as binging, but... Anyway, so, moving on, can we do the resolutions now?
Yes, sir.
There have been slight changes on the resolutions for Fourth Avenue. I think there were, if I'm correct, Jack, you basically had to change the addresses and that was really about it?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make...
That was some time ago, yes.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for 1321 Fourth Avenue. The appeal.
All right, and again, everyone can vote except for Daniel Harris.
I need a second?
Here, Jill Potter. Oh.
I'll second.
Thank you. And new members will not.
You should go.
I should. Okay, Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Yes.
Russell Lewis. And Christopher Avaloni.
Yes. I will make another motion to approve the 1321 Fourth Avenue variance.
I'll second.
And Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Yes.
Russell Lewis. And Chris Avaloni.
Yes. And I will make a final motion to approve the 510 Fifth Avenue resolution.
I'll second.
Thank you. And everyone is eligible except Brittany.
Oh. One second.
I'll second.
Oh, I can still second.
Still second, correct?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Yes.
Chris Avaloni.
Yes.
Are they approved?
All right, so, a little few more housekeeping issues. I will make a motion to carry the Advanced Development Group application to October 8th, 2019.
I'll second.
Without further notice?
Without further notice, yes, of course.
Yes, and let's put into record
A letter?
Letter received by Samozen Associates requesting to be carried waiving the applicable timeline.
Jill, do you know where we're on the list? Just make it AA1.
AA1.
And do I have a second?
Yeah, I second.
Do we take a vote on this?
Yes.
Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Chris Avaloni.
Yes.
Everyone can vote.
Yes, the new members can vote because they now listen to those transcripts as well. It's just a motion.
Okay. Jill Potter.
Yes.
And Timothy Slick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I will make a motion to carry the 1503 Park Avenue application to November 12th, 2019 without further notice.
I'll second.
Thank you, and again, we have a letter requesting to be carried waiving all type constraints. Thank you.
I do not believe Jill or Tim heard the...
1503 Park Avenue.
They did hear it?
They have.
Okay, great.
We don't have...
Is there a certification on that?
The certifications, do they need that to be present?
For the votes to carry it, no, hearing, yes.
Eric, Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick. Sorry, Tim Slick.
Yes.
And Chris Avaloni.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I will make a motion to carry the 900 Cookman application to November 12th, 2019 without further notice.
I'll second.
And...
Did they hear this one?
They did not hear this one.
Okay. Oh, no, this is a new application, nobody's heard this.
This is a new application?
Yeah, it's a new application.
You don't almost hear it.
It's just a motion to carry it.
Right. Right. Okay.
Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
And Chris Avaloni.
Yes. All right, and the last housekeeping issue we have is to review and approve the zoning board schedule for 2020. Has anyone, has everyone on the board had a chance to take a look at the dates? It's generally the second and fourth Tuesday of every month with the exception of a few months, such as August, November, and December.
I have. And I have a little bit of, at least three days that I will be missing. I have two conflicts.
Did you discuss any of that with Arena beforehand?
Uh, no, I told her that we were gonna discuss it tonight.
Okay, which conflicts do you have, Christopher?
I won't be able to be here on the March 10th. I'm doing a... I'm going to back to my country to celebrate my parents.
You don't have to explain, Christopher. You can just tell us your conflict, you can just tell us which days are your conflicts.
And also on May 12th.
So, March 10th, May 12th.
I won't be in the country either.
Okay.
And also July 28th.
July 28th.
Yeah, and that's it.
And you, Eric, said you have conflicts as well.
January 28th and March 10th.
So, two of you won't be available on March 10th? Don't know if that will cause a problem or not, Arena, might.
Let me just, so, March is not a problem because there are no holidays. Let me just check January to see if we can use another date.
I may have a conflict in February. Chris, the only day I can't make is April 28th, and all the other dates look good.
Well, at least everybody is choosing different days.
Okay, so, Brittany, April 28th. And Jill.
Yes, February 11th and February 25th.
Both those days?
Yes.
All right.
I can also, I know that I told you
It may not happen.
About March 10th.
Okay.
I will be gone for two weeks, so the 3rd is not available to me either.
Oh, okay.
So I just wanna let you know.
Okay, so that will be an option. But, Chris, will you be here on the 3rd?
March 28th.
March 3rd.
March 3rd?
Yes.
That's I will hear.
Keep in mind, you have to watch the planning board schedule and the council meetings too, if there's any changes with the, if we're gonna make changes to ours. So, generally, there's no conflicts, but...
There's generally none. Council meetings are Wednesdays and planning boards are Mondays. Let me just check the holidays for... For February. So, and March, we said there were none. So, March, we can do, we can change it to either the 3rd or the 31st.
I think we only have to be concerned if like two of the members are gonna be absent on the same time.
Which is March 10th.
Yeah, the other dates, there's just one.
The other...
Yeah, so I don't know if we need to change it just for the one person being absent, but I think if we have two, then it becomes a little more concerning.
Right.
Would you agree?
Yes, I do agree. So, I think we only need to change that one meeting in March.
Okay.
Is March 3rd preferred or March 31st? If we do March 31st, we only have one week in between meetings?
I would say go for the 3rd.
Okay.
If everybody's in agreement.
Are you okay with that being?
Yes.
Not to point out that you only have one week between meetings between February 25th and March 31st.
That's true. I'd rather have it in the beginning of the month.
All right, so, I've gone ahead and changed March to March 3rd. Everything else will remain the same.
Okay. I mean, we haven't really had Russell's opinion or Dan's.
That's true.
So, I don't know if we should, let's table the idea until they can give some input as well. And we can review it again for the next meeting.
Yes, and that's fine, we just have to finalize it before the end of October.
Okay, so we have time.
We don't adopt the schedule until January.
We don't adopt until January.
Right.
We need to finalize it return.
Yes, internally for those...
We need to finalize it actually for the calendar, the city calendar, Jack.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, so, I'll make a motion to take a recess for 15 minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's get started, everyone, now that Russell has been able to join us again.
Sorry for my tardiness.
7:27 PM. Daniel Harris. Eric Gallopo.
Here.
Brittany Ashman.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Here.
Chris Avaloni.
Here.
And Tim Slick.
Here.
All right, so, Valario, application 1,000 grand. Mr. Carris, welcome back. I hope you had a nice summer.
Wonderful summer. Hopefully you did soon.
It was quick, always too quick.
Tell me about it. We're here back on the Valario application. Last time we were here just for the board's application, there were a few changes that we were discussing to the plans. I'll call, I will call back my architect, Mr. Walker, to go over those, relatively minor. I'm gonna finish up with our planner and that's our presentation.
All right, I think we were only left with the planner, is that correct?
There were some minor revisions that were requested that we did, so I'll just have him go through that real fast and then plan them all down.
All right.
All right, Mr. Walker.
Evening, everybody.
Evening, everybody. Do you swear on testimony that Mr. Stevens will be the truth or will truth and honesty?
I do.
Say the name to the director.
Joseph Walker. Excuse me, why don't we get the staffs on in?
Do you swear on testimony that Mr. Stevens will be the truth or will truth and honesty? Say the names and your affiliation to the panel or the planner.
Jason, touch your boarder.
I meant, at the last year, and there were a few suggested revisions to the plans. Did you call on it?
Yes.
And we made those revisions to the plans?
That's correct.
Briefly go through the revisions on your plans and also the others.
The top renderings and drawings are the updated.
Are you gonna identify that with...
Eight, twelve.
Is it all, can identify your revised plan as eight, twelve, identify?
Could you just review, Mr. Walker, exactly what was revised and why it was revised? It's been a while.
Yes, of course. So, I believe the first item, here's to... We understood that it would be better to increase the number of windows along the first floor on the Grand Ave elevation and...
And you're making references to the renderings up there with these revisions, am I correct?
That's correct.
So let's identify those as... Next, we have...
Eight, thirteen, eight, fourteen. Eight, thirteen to be the Grand Avenue elevation.
And then eight, fourteen is...
The second Avenue elevation.
Go ahead.
The next item of concern was having balcony areas adjacent to the property lines. What we are proposing at this point is to have some kind of privacy screen along that side of the balcony. At this end of the building, you could see one at the other end of the building as well. And just to integrate the privacy screen a little better, we introduced a pergola at the top as well as other balcony areas to make it a little more beautiful.
That is very cool, by the way. Still, I like that.
Hey, we're state-of-the-art here.
You are, you are. Go ahead.
And with that, we have very minor balcony area changes. I guess originally we had, this was the only balcony area. We made it a little larger on this end. Those areas are bubbled on the building area calculations. What I'll show you very quickly is, at the second floor, this balcony area changed very little bit, just trying to hollow out the interior a little better. Actually, second floor, unit two, we lost some square footage. But at the third floor, this particular unit gained some square footage just with the orientation of the dormers, some of these dormer changes and moving units around, very minor square footage calculations. At the end of it, our FAR is 7,071 square feet equals 0.79.
So that can change it out there. Or very minor.
It is the same, 0.79, so, very minor.
So, for each of these units, all the HVAC equipment is on top of the roof and all hidden?
That is correct.
And that's it, start of the revision, am I correct?
Yes.
The parking that we revised last time, that's all still on, it's just, obviously revised plans, correct?
Yes, you'll see the garages on the side, that was all covered in the last meeting.
So, we have a note in the planner's report that the site plan and the architectural plans don't match, is that...
That was, the engineer covered that. We had a minor discrepancy at this end where the wall was off like four inches and his testimony covered the correct amount.
But his site plan hasn't been revised to reflect the architectural footprint. We have that revised plan.
But that'll happen in resolution.
Any other questions?
You're not required to have a handrail on that first floor, even those three steps up?
When the deck is more than 30 inches above the grade, guardrail is required.
30 inches?
Correct.
Thank you.
More than 30.
More than 30.
So, we stay at 2'6", we can leave it somewhat more unobstructed.
Cool. Thank you.
And can you review the parking? Has there been any changes to how that works in the garages?
We did not make any changes in that area and because there were revisions on the engineering plan, I'm not showing the driveway, but our garages are 1, 2, 3.
Do you have your architectural plan, first floor, available?
Yes.
Oh, so you're not showing, I thought you...
I'm not showing the driveway anymore, just so that we would avoid more conflict from continuous revisions.
And there's still one curb cut on the property, correct?
Yes.
The curb cut is on Second Avenue.
Yes.
But your site plan will have to include the civil work.
The engineer's site plan included civil, included drainage and grading.
Okay.
You can see it in the picture, the entrance to the driveway.
Well, that's, that picture doesn't necessarily reflect what's...
Well, it's the engineering.
Some of the site elements are not in the rendering, the buildings are really what's covered in the rendering, landscaping, defenses.
No, I'm just saying that you can't judge the site plan based on what's in the rendering. You have to use the site plan to judge the site. What does that mean?
I'm sorry. I must say, I like the render, I really do. It took us a little while to get to this point, but I... I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but personally, I'm like... I liked it in the last go-round, I like it even more this time.
I guess my question, Donna, for you, just reading your report, seems like there's still a lot of the building design standards and architectural design guidelines that they need variances for. Can you explain a little bit that since I'm an architect? I drop a flaw in your report. What's missing, what's required?
So, again, it's just the way they've chosen to sort of embellish the building doesn't use the types of architectural elements that are found in the neighborhood. And ordinance is written so that, you know, you should complement your neighborhood by taking those pieces and making it blend in. So, you know, the specific point that the roof is manseur roof, there aren't any manseur roofs.
Jill, can you address it, are there manseur roofs in that area?
Some of the challenges with the design guidelines are that they are more specific in that they want direct replication of elements directly from your block. There are manseur roofs in the neighborhood, not necessarily in the block.
Oh, right across the street.
Two across the street, Second Avenue. There's one a block east and on Second and Happy.
So we do have...
It's not a standard design element though, in the city, but...
But it's shown, it is within the neighborhood.
Correct.
It's consistent with the character and the historic period. Victorian architecture covers a larger span and a number of styles and a number of building elements and it's consistent with the neighborhood.
Doesn't say it has to be at least 50% of the buildings on the block?
Yes.
So that's why they still need a variance then?
Correct.
Is it a variance?
It's technically a zoning section.
But this design is also because of the form of the building and what you're putting on top of the building. It is for a reason, it's not just a design desire, there's actually function for this.
Yes, of course, the primary purpose of hiding mechanical units.
I think that's a valid reason, it's a very valid reason.
Especially because you're on a corner property, so you're visible from both sides.
It would be hard to disagree with that, Mr. Carris.
That's it.
It would be hard to disagree with that.
Well, the roof treatment's just one of four things that's mentioned in the report. Also massing, ornamentation, and the waterfront architectural guidelines. So besides the roof, what else?
Well, the massing, you contrast, we done things with the massing of the building, am I correct?
I think a variance is still needed. Porch design.
Again, because the way the ordinance tells you to look at what's on the block, all of the houses on the block are basically a basic box, porch attached to the front. And this is more of a, you know, negative space created, even the void, the building doesn't project, the porch doesn't project from the building, the porch is in the building. And I would just say that, again, many of these things are a function of the size of the building, which is part of that that they are here in, so...
Well, I also...
Could you get a porch that sticks out from a building, system of a building, by reducing the floor area? I don't know, they haven't presented us with an option like that. Could they do a different roof if they had a smaller building volume and do the gable end, which is typical on that block front? Again, we haven't seen that version, or else I haven't heard, you know, a bit more about the block. But it's also to some extent, we can say the architectural style could be taken from the block, but there isn't a similar use with fully separated condo-type...
Townhouses.
Townhouse thinking, that's it.
Townhouses, yeah, we really don't have that.
Trying to, the most accurate statement I've heard is that Victorian architecture spans a great many styles. And it does, manseur roofs are common in some Victorian vernaculars. Are they here? No. But can we then expect you to be able to take all of the, you know, to cherry pick and make something that fits perfectly out?
It's a challenging task.
Bad, yeah.
Couldn't agree more.
That could end up looking more...
And I think that is...
It could end up looking less like appropriate by trying to...
Not, not, no answer required. It's just a statement that, so, these requirements, which are prescriptive and sort of say you have to look around you, might not necessarily be, wouldn't be able to have gotten to this point, you know, with the building mass. Do I think the building mass could be smaller? Sure. But we've moved from how many units, five to three, four?
And we redesigned where the garages are?
Yes, and you're good. There's been a significant number of changes that have gotten us to this point and while I don't see it being necessarily as directly reflective of the exact ornamentation and massing, I do think there has been an attempt to be contextual.
I think that was a compliment, Mr. Walker. I would just like to discuss some of the stormwater management that's going on with the building. How are you going to be addressing that considerable issue for that particular piece of property?
Maybe we should not get into... Maybe we should not get into those details at the last meeting, but they're in the drawings, these engineering drawings.
And there's a stormwater here, we report that happens in the letter.
So, my notes do show that we discussed that at the previous hearings, and the engineer that testified went through our letter and basically said, "We'll provide and comply," and all that.
I'm good with that.
What about the plannings? Something about, let's see, we're just reading this, the planning plan, planting plan? Has that been provided?
We had gone through that, and we said we'd comply with whatever it did, whatever shade tree commission, whatever it might require or find.
It's just in...
We had discussed that.
It's just in code.
We work, and there are certain revisions that were requested, in terms of type of plans we set.
I, I think originally it was like a red maple trees that were going to be used, and then... It looks like there's only one downspout on this very nice rendering.
Right, that's what I was asking about as well.
It's a special one, it covers all over.
You gotta go by the engineer's testimony.
No, I think Russell's question is about aesthetics. I see two, three in the...
They're shown on the second avenue, not on the grand avenue, but they will be brought down similarly along the building corners and the column bases.
If there's any way to move that one that's on that, on the true corner, if we could back that up a little bit, that would...
Is this one?
Yeah.
Is the problem that it projects too much? Because we can have it follow the column more closely, so it doesn't look like it's standing out.
Yeah, if it's not, yeah. Truly becoming the corner of the entire property, that would be, that would be great.
The architectural drawing will indicate very clearly how it will closely fit to the profile of the column.
That's a very important corner, and I appreciate that it's, it's open and you can see through it. And I believe we did go over the lighting management for the garage area and the driveway. Is that one of the things that we did discuss?
We did that, yeah.
I don't have any further questions unless, does anybody on the board have any more comments or questions for Mr. Walker?
So, the little side door over there is for the garbage?
This one?
Yeah.
I think it's just an access point. And did, um, compensating garbage within each of the garage areas. You no longer have outside garage, which is garbage storage.
There's this one, they're different, they're not coordinated. Which one do you got? I prefer this one. So, your, in your architectural drawings for your elevations, do you have those handy? You are...
Kind of hard for me to see the difference.
So, your south elevation has a detail for the downspout that we, that corner downspout that passes through the soffit? Do you see that? And then in your south elevation, your Second Avenue elevation, it kind of works its way around? So, this, the elevation on the lower half of the page, yes, it works its way around? So, I think what Russell and I just sort of confabbed about is heading through the soffit, as you've shown it in your front elevation, it seems like there's two different...
So, on the bottom, this is sheet A5, the bottom elevation, which is the Grand Avenue west elevation. At the left side of that drawing, you see a downspout coming down the side of the building. In that front corner of the building, we have a pergola. So, that downspout that you see is actually back here.
Understood, but this type of detail, are you looking at the same view on elevation? Second Avenue south? So, that's the, the, the top drawing on the, on the page there is the same view as we're looking at in the rendering, correct?
These two are the same.
Yes, so what I'm saying is that the detail for this, the downspout you're seeing in that Second Avenue rendering isn't, it, there's, the drawing's not...
This is not the same as this.
That's correct, so, well, what we're saying is, well, we like what's on the architectural plan, now it's in the rendering.
Okay.
Perfect.
And it dumps into the gutter, it doesn't keep going.
That's correct.
Keeping tight to the building.
That's a much cleaner detail, but, and I think your drawing isn't coordinated because the, the same downspout on the front elevation...
It's in here better.
Oh, thank you, is different. I'm just saying your drawing needs to be...
No, it'll, it'll be consistent with the plans, regardless of...
Yes.
But that, that detail with the...
Will be carried to the other...
Your drawing, yes.
Any other comments or questions from the board? We're professionals, any questions or comments? All right, I'll open it up to the public to question Mr. Walker. Please come up, state your name. I'm not sure if that's an "on," is it? Okay.
Good to go. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue, city historian. I have a couple of questions. Do we know what the total enclosed square footage of the original building is versus the total enclosed square footage of this building? That is the effective living space exclusive of exterior porches and such?
The interior finished square footage is... Which by, seven thousand seventy-one square feet.
Seven thousand seventy. And the existing structure that's there?
And, bear with me one second.
Sure, thank you.
I have it in my notes, because it was testimony given in terms of F A R. So, the existing F A R is six thousand three hundred and three square feet.
Six thousand three hundred and three, okay. So, substantially larger proposal here.
Subject to the characterization substantial.
Thank you.
Is it larger? Yes, it is slightly larger.
Okay. The existing structure, was that a one-family structure, or two, or three?
Here's the testimony by Josh Valerio, that was, I think, a multifamily structure. It was four plus...
Mr. Valerio, are you still under, is he still under oath?
No.
Yeah.
Please, Mr. Carris, do you swear affirm the testimony given, or the previous proceedings will be in the two, the whole two, then nothing but the two?
Yes, ma'am.
State your name for the record?
Josh Valerio.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think at the first meeting we were at, I testified, and I provided proof in front of the zoning department, previous status was on record, and also...
Multi-family.
It was a four-family, but that was also about the...
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the answer.
It was a four-family plus a doctor's office.
A four-family plus a doctor's office?
Correct.
Okay. And you're choosing to submit this application with the address of Grand Avenue, one thousand grand. Is there some particular reason for that, since the legal address is four fifteen Second Avenue?
No, it's not the legal address.
I don't see how that is valid to the architect's testimony, Mr. Baumgartner.
Um, just asking.
But it is, it is not in the scope of his, his testimony. So, I, I appreciate the question, but it is...
Okay, okay, good. I withdraw the question. I'd like a little refresher on the relief from the twenty-five-foot setback that you're proposing.
We've gone through that in nauseous criticism, and I believe there had been questions from the public on those issues. Right now, we're dealing with a specific issue from the architect, limited to the revisions that he did on these plans.
Sustained, Mr. Carris.
Okay. Some questions about the architecture, then, which was testified to. If this were a two-family proposal, would you find it easier to meet the design requirements as indicated in the reports?
Again, that's not really in relation to his current testimony, Mr. Baumgartner.
It was discussed, right up there at the board.
But that is not in relation to what he has just testified to.
You were supposed to cross-examine him on his...
Yes, he previously testified to those things. You're limiting me to tonight's testimony only?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the general public?
Ernest Magnoli, four hundred D L A Drive, apartment five D, Asbury Park, New Jersey, oh seven, seven, one, two. Do I need to, no? We're not doing that here?
No, it's just questions for Mr. Walker's current testimony.
Okay, just for the architect?
Yes.
And for the revisions only?
Yes. For his testimony tonight.
If, if I heard correctly, we're talking the side balcony on Grand, some modify, addition, adding it?
There, there were slight modifications to...
All right, on the side, Grand Avenue is...
That's correct.
No curb cut anymore? I don't think any, there's no curb...
We're talking about each revisions.
Okay, so, is the addition of the balcony on the, on the Grand side, and some windows?
Wasn't it an addition, it was a modification.
Of the balcony?
Correct.
And the, when you mentioned the additional windows, does that wrap around on the Grand?
Grand Avenue first floor facade area, we included more windows.
Yeah, and, and that's the revision?
Correct.
And, and then coming around the front of the building, I think there...
Sorry, which side?
At the front of the building?
We have two fronts. So, there's a Grand Ave facade and a Second Ave facade, which, which one are you...
Well, you know, I, I thought, we're not broaching that, because I, I was trying to figure out when Mr. Baumgartner asked about the two addresses, so you didn't really seem...
Address is different than the yard, the yard is a zoning element, and the address is...
Okay, all right, well, I'm confused as he is. So, in other words, when I say front, and I'm asking you a question about front, I have to either say Second or Grand, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay, fine. So now, I'm asking about the second front, Second Avenue front, modifications to what, add some windows?
Similar to the Grand Ave side, we introduced an architectural element that has a...
I'm sorry, the picture was better for me, do you mind?
I'm sorry, Mr. Magnoli, say that again.
The picture was better for me than the, than the one-dimensional than this. Is there, okay.
Introduced this architectural element to satisfy some screening and a pergola at the top.
And that's kind of it for the Second Avenue front?
Correct.
Okay, and then, what do we call where the driveway is, that's designated as what, rear or side?
The drive.
And, and wasn't there some, was there any modification to that? The driveway, the garages, or anything on that side? Or the equipment, the storage of the systems?
No, the system...
I thought I heard systems. There was no revision?
No.
Okay, and there's no revisions on the driveway side?
No.
Okay, is the, is the net result of the, am I able to ask, like, just, I'm a little confused on this, three one-car garages?
There are three...
Three one-car garages.
Are they tandem or one-car? One-car?
They each have their own one-car garage.
One-car garage, okay, so, and, and then architecturally, am I able to ask, did you, you, you made one curb cut on Second?
Okay, we've gone through this at the last hearing.
Okay, all right, sir. Mr. Carris, you don't have to go into a treaty, just do your job, I'll stop. Let's save time, okay? So, uh, so then there are no modifications on the driveway side? So, there's really nothing I can ask tonight, right?
I don't know.
You know what's funny, Mr. Carris? You think everything's funny, you know? We live here, we don't like a lot of stuff that you get approved. You live somewhere in ocean, but you don't care, but you think it's funny, so I made my comment.
Mr. Magnoli, could you, could you keep your comments and questions specifically for Mr. Walker's testimony?
If we do away with the distraction, I will.
No.
So, there were no modifications on the, on the driveway side, tonight?
We've gone through that, there are modifications on two foot side.
I thought I'm asking...
I just finished, please. From Second Ave and Grand Ave, we've gone through Second Ave, the only other modifications are Grand Ave. Nothing on the garage, so ask about Grand Ave.
Are, are you okay, you're a little bit, you seem a little aggravated.
Get to a point, please.
I'm just, I'm asking the architect a simple question.
I answered.
Tonight, there's no modification. Thank you, why don't you just let him answer?
I already did.
Please pay attention, move on.
Me pay attention? Please. Okay. So, the, so you're dealing with, and thank you for the explanation about the square foot, it's very good. We went from six to seven, that's all, see, on by me.
That's a mischaracterization.
Excuse me?
That's a mischaracterization of the testimony, we didn't go from six to seven.
I can't, who's speaking?
Me.
Who's me?
Mr. Serpico is speaking.
The attorney?
Yes.
What's a mischaracterization? It's not six thousand to seven thousand, there were specific numbers, six thousand changed to seven thousand.
Six thousand three oh three.
You said six to seven, it didn't go from six to seven. It was a specific number to a specific number.
I just wrote it down.
Thank you, anyway, okay. If you did a good job, I guess the footage is the same, the footprint, somehow you got someone's square feet with efficiency. I was gonna compliment, I think that's a good job.
Do you have a question, Mr. Magnoli, for Mr. Walker? Any more questions?
Only, if it's only about the modifications, no.
Thank you so much. Anyone else from the general public for Mr. Walker's testimony tonight?
One more witness, Catherine Gregory, our planner. Catherine, come on up.
Yes, ma'am. State your name for the record, it's about your last name. Name is Catherine Gregory, and Catherine is actually spelled K T H R Y N. And my last name is Gregory, which is easier, G R E G R Y. Thank you.
Ms. Gregory, could you give us some of your credentials for the board?
I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey and have been so since the year 2000. I am the principal of Gregory Associates, it's located in Portland, New Jersey. I have testified before hundreds of boards throughout the state of New Jersey in the last twenty years. I also represent a couple of towns myself.
Have you presented before us before?
Yes.
I think so, yes.
Charter school.
Ah, yes.
We'll see you again soon.
We've come full circle, Mr. Carris.
Yes, yes, I'm ready.
I'm so glad.
Okay. So, any, do you have any more?
No, thank you so much.
Great, all right. So, we've been here a really long time, and I'm about to clean up. As you well know, and you've discussed this evening, this project has really come full circle. I've been sitting here for a good year and a half, I believe, at some of the hearings. And amazingly, if you could take a look at what my outline used to look like and what it looks like now, it's pretty unbelievable. We've reduced a lot of, I'm sorry, eliminated a lot of the variances that were initially associated with this project. So, now we're down to a few comparatively to what we first came here with.
Which we like a lot.
Yes, 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 yes. So, we all know this isn't a professional office zone, we are allowed to have multi-family, it's sort of...
That's no longer a professional office zone.
Well, when we...
It still is.
It still is.
Oh, it still is.
Yes, well, and particularly when we actually applied for this application, it was still a professional office. And when we applied, that's the zone that actually applies, so, again...
I understand, Ms. Gregory, go on.
Right, right, so, just to recap, we are permitted use, but we do need a couple of variances associated with the R2 zone, because that's actually the standards that we need to follow, and that's how it passes through your zoning ordinance. So, with that said, what has been previously discussed tonight, the first and foremost would be the F A R variance. Point five is permitted, point seven is existing, and that's actually located on the plans, and point seven nine is proposed. It has been discussed about the fact that, I believe that this is probably going to be a little bit better of a, a project than what is existing there today. But we have to talk about what are the impacts of the F A R, the greater F A R. What's interesting is that in your 2017 master plan, master plan reexamination, excuse me, it actually recommended that the F A R requirement in the R2 zone be eliminated. So, if we had applied for this later on and that had been eliminated, we would need the F A R variance, but we need that today. And so, with that said, in terms of the massing, I don't believe this is out of character, the massing that's in the neighborhood. We do have a little bit bigger... do have a little bit bigger property when you take a look at the tax maps, just as well, I did do an analysis of the neighborhood, and there are three properties on this particular block that have FARs that are greater than what we're proposing. That would be, on this block, it's block 3405, lot eight has an FAR of .8, lot six has an FAR of .99, and lot one has an FAR of .89. And I also just took the liberty of looking at the blocks that are adjacent to this block.
May I, may I start?
I'm sorry?
Where, what's the source of your information?
Actually, it's all the tax data.
Okay, that's...
Yeah, the tax records.
Do you know what the addresses were for this?
Um, I can give you a tax map...
Or like, a graph?
But I, I don't know what the addresses are.
And are those undersized lots or full size?
Some of them are and some of them are not. I can, I can describe them for you. Okay, so, let's go back to the first one. Okay, so, I'm looking at the tax map, and I, now I need readers. No, the funny part is, I have context to see far, and now I can't see near. Okay.
If you tell me the block and lots, I can tell you the address.
Oh, great, all right, let's recap. All right, the first one would be, um, block 3405, lot eight.
It's 401 Second Avenue.
Okay.
So that's on Second Avenue, okay.
What's at the corner?
Okay, I understand.
Great, um, lot six on the same block?
That is 403rd Avenue.
Okay, lot one on the same block?
And that is 1010 Grand Avenue.
Are there single, are there multi-family? That's an apartment building, correct?
Um, some, some of them are multi-family and some of them are single-family.
Yeah, that's apartment, that's apartment building on Third Avenue, correct?
Um, yes, yes, that's an apartment building.
Not really a great comparison, but go ahead.
But the FAR exists.
It does.
I'm not saying they look good, I'm just saying it's there.
Or would not be still in view.
I'm just talking about the massing scale of the neighborhood. I understand that the, the professional office zone is located only along...
Please proceed, Ms. Gregory.
Okay, and then block 3403, lot nine?
That is 1102 Half Street.
Okay, that has an FAR of 1.65.
1.2 half. Yeah, those are, those are deeply undersized lots, deeply undersized.
Well, the next one would be, uh, block 3406, lot 11, and that has an FAR of .88. So lot nine is, yeah, lot nine is a small slot, as I'm looking at the tax map.
And that last one is 307 Second Avenue.
Yes, okay, um, so as I was saying, there are similar FARs in the neighborhood.
But maybe not the same type of property, but please go on, Ms. Gregory.
No, but we're talking about massing scale, but we do have a large property.
I understand your point, but please go on.
Um, and I believe that it's also helped to be mitigated by the fact that we are on the quarter lot, and so when I get to the next variance, which is basically the front yard setback variance, as I scroll through my, um, so 25 feet is required, and we are proposing 13.5 feet along Grand Avenue, 13.8 feet is actually existing to the existing building, so we're actually pretty close to that, and as you probably well know, part of that is partially resolved, we did reduce the number of units in the building, but because we pushed the building back to accommodate the parking on the side, which is also technically the rear, we pushed that rear yard setback, we're hard up 25 feet, but we're proposing 35.5. So it's sort of a trade-off, but again, I do believe that it's helped to be mitigated by the fact that these streets are really wide right of way, it's 100 feet, they're not 50 feet, they're 100 feet, so we don't believe that there's any impact to any adequate light, air, and open space in the front yard by having that deficient setback, plus, it's very similar to what the existing condition was there earlier for the existing building. In terms of, I know that all the architectural elements were, I think they're discussed far enough, but what I will say is that, for the building design standards, when you take a look at section 30-69 under community development standards, I think that we meet the intent of, of this section in general, while maybe we don't meet, you know, the 50% of the, the buildings on the one side, et cetera, et cetera, but basically what it says is, pursuant to the Minnesota land use law, this section is intended to preserve and protect the character of residential neighborhoods in the city in a manner consistent with their architectural history as set forth in the historic preservation element of the Asbury Park master plan, like, from 1990, and the land use plan element of the Asbury Park master plan. The standards contained herein are designed to provide for new development on vacant lots and additions to existing structures that are consistent and complementary to the original homes and buildings in low-density residential neighborhoods so as to preserve and enhance property values for the public welfare. I think that is what we are doing here, while we might not meet every single one of the little architectural elements that we need to meet with the railings and the roof and et cetera, et cetera, this is a reflective character, and I do believe that it's going to promote and enhance the neighborhood, so I do believe we meet the intent of the architectural design guidelines are, are trying to do. So with that said, I'll talk about the positive criteria. I think that we promote purpose A, the Minnesota land use law, and that's really sort of the biggest one and most encompassing, it talks about promotion of public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Reason I say that is, we are taking somewhat of a dilapidated building, providing a new structure, albeit is a new type of structure, it is permitted in the zone, and I do believe we are going to enhance those property values with the addition of this project. I also believe, as I stated before, we're going to create a desirable visual environment. I believe that through the very many iterations of, of this project, I think we've come up with something that is very attractive and also addresses both corners, and that's very important when you have a corner property, because many houses, particularly single families, don't also, excuse me, always necessarily do that, so I do believe that promoting desirable visual environment. I also believe that we are promoting a purpose C, which talks about providing like, adequate light, air, and open spaces, I discussed before, also purpose E, which talks about the promotion of appropriate population densities. Our density is conforming, as it wasn't before, but now it is, which is great. And then in terms of the negative criteria, the negative criteria has the two prongs, and what we have to prove is there, is there any substantial detriment to the public good, or any substantial impairment to your zone plan and zoning ordinance by granting the variances. I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to the public good. As I already stated, there are massing FARs in the neighborhood that are greater than what we're proposing here, I know that, I understand that some of them are different structures, but we're also talking about masking, massing and scale, excuse me. As I stated earlier, the FAR requirement is actually recommended to be eliminated in your master plan, so that basically goes to not substantially impairing the intent purpose of your zone plan and zoning ordinance. In terms of the public good, I believe that what we've come up with here through iterations with the board, one of the concerns was many of the curb cuts, now we're down to one. Originally we had proposed four, now we're down to one. I believe that that really promotes the public good rather than detracts from it, because now we're talking about one portion of the property that's going to have track coming in and out versus the four, which I think is a better alternative.
And we do appreciate those efforts, Ms. Gregory.
So, right, right, so I think that in terms of the negative criteria, I believe that we meet both the positive and the negative criteria for the granting of the variances, and I'm happy to answer any other questions that the board may have.
I personally don't have any questions for Ms. Gregory, anybody else on the board? No? Or professionals? Anyone in the public have any questions for Ms. Gregory? And please, Mr. Baumgartner, please keep it to her testimony.
Absolutely. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue, Asbury Park, city historian. Testified about the setback on Grand Avenue, and you stated that that was 18 and something? Or 13?
No, 13.
13, and 25 is...
13.5 feet.
Okay, where are you measuring that to on the building?
Um, that's, um...
Do you get that when we place the architect in the interview?
Uh, well, actually, well, I, you said it was better with the picture, what I was going to say is, can we have, can you put the other, um, other, yeah, can you put Grand, yeah, right, Grand Ave size? Okay, that's actually measured to this right here, because this, this portion is over the porch, so it's actually measured right there.
Interesting, okay.
Same, same size.
What is the measurement on the ground floor to the building?
It's the same.
You just said it's the second floor that you measured to?
No, I know, but, um, what I'm talking about is that, okay, this, this is effectively a porch, but this is actually interior, this is interior bump out, this is interior bump out, so it goes basically to the edge of the porch and also to the side of the building.
Okay, what is the measurement, what is the setback on the first floor?
To the...
Can't be, the second floor juts out further.
He's asking, what's the distance from the enclosed area on the first floor to the property line, which you'll have to ask.
That, that's, setback is different from...
Correct.
Basically, what's the depth of the porch?
Well, that's what, oh, what's the depth of the porch? It's 19 feet to the building.
19 feet to the building, okay. You're aware that that's how we measure setbacks here in Asbury, correct?
Yeah.
To the building, not to the porch?
That, that is not, you've actually brought that up several meetings ago, Mr. Baumgartner, and you addressed that before.
Thank you, she's testifying to setbacks, so I think I'm entitled...
But you did ask those questions before, and we addressed your questions then.
Okay. On the Second Avenue side, what is the setback on the Second Avenue side? And where is it measured to?
It's also, it's also meant to the building, which, I guess can we...
Wait.
I'm sorry. That would also be measured to, to here, or, or to here, or to here, and this is, basically, this, this is porch, this porch, I'm sorry, and this...
And how much is that, what's, what is the measurement to that building wall?
It's 17.8. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, all right, okay, I understand correctly, porch is 18 feet three inches, and ceiling is 18 feet seven inches.
18.3 versus 18.7? It's a very small porch.
No, 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 to the edge of the porch.
It's not the same.
Oh, okay.
Me and the porch actually go somewhere.
Right, what, what, what public benefit, what benefit does the public derive from encroaching into the, the setback?
Uh, the fact that we put all the parking in one location in the back, we eliminated three of the curb cuts, and we only have one curb left.
Okay.
The benefits, not, not with any judgments, I'm pressing, approaching into the front yard, it was actually increasing the rear yard too.
I see, okay. You had mentioned the master plan, some references to the master plan, and I'm wondering if you're aware of the urban design recommendations in there to maintain public view corridors as part of any design?
We're not impacting any public view corridors by diminishing my curb setback.
Oh, you're not?
Never not.
How is that possible? You're pushing this building up further to the street than the other buildings, that affects the view corridor, doesn't it? That's a question.
It's argumentative.
Sure it's argumentative, I'm, I'm cross-examining.
Now, it doesn't mean you can argue.
I'm not arguing, okay.
Just stay, Mr. Caris, please, please ask a question.
How, how does the view corridor, how is the view corridor affected by reducing the front yard setback?
Objection, I want to answer the question.
It has?
She already testified as to what her, what, she testified as to the corridor and how the property is situated, where the house is situated on the property. Just answered the question a second ago where you made argumentative with whether or not you agree with her assessment of the building's setback.
Okay, all right. To the testimony about the other properties in the area as to the floor area ratios, what significance would that have if those properties are around the other side of the block or not within sight of even this development? You picked properties that are not on this block frontage, you picked properties...
One actually is, actually two of them are, two of them are on the, on the, on the first.
Two?
Yes.
Okay, and you gave one, two, three, four, five examples, only, only two of which are in proximity to this particular side.
Objection to the term proximity, because you're not directly on the same block, does that mean, does that mean you're not somewhat in the proximity of this property?
Okay, all right. Wouldn't it make more sense to pick properties that are on the street frontage instead of the actual circuitous block around the back?
I was planning to take a look at the neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. Anyone else from the general public for Ms. Gregory and her testimony?
Drive, apartment 5D, Asbury Park, New Jersey. So I'm questioning the...
The planner.
The planner.
And her testimony.
And her testimony, and I believe she mentioned the curb cuts?
She did.
Okay, so I can ask a question of curb cuts?
Sure.
Okay, so I think it's admirable, the way you did away with the Grand Avenue curb cuts, and what I'd like to ask about the curb cut on Second, so basically, you made one curb cut to make a double driveway, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Am, am I allowed to ask a question of the planner, since it impacts the neighborhood? So basically, it's a net loss of one parking space on Second. Yes?
Well, actually...
I mean, to the public.
Well, technically, no, because there, there is actually, you see, a curve prepared, though, you know...
Well, no, I'm saying, on Second, there was a, one driveway there, and in order to forego the curb cuts on Grand, you made a curb cut on Second and joined them, so you have a double, so what I'm saying is...
But we're actually technically don't, it's 12 feet wide.
It's what?
It's 12 feet wide, it's not 12 feet wide.
So it's one...
It functions two ways, but it's only 12 feet wide.
Which would be the equivalent of a, of a normal one curb cut? Is that what a parking space is? Okay, thank you. Okay, so then, really, there's no impact, but from a planner's point of view, we're also talking about how it impacts the neighborhood. Now, I, I know you know that's a dense area, it's becoming more dense, I mean, I happen to live not too far from there, and it's more dense, so my question is, I looked at another building that got the curb cut variance and put it in, and then I started to follow on what happened so that it didn't impact the neighborhood.
Objection, this is a question I was making.
Can't compare, but, but you can compare five properties.
Mr. Minoli, do you have a question for Ms. Gregory's testimony?
Okay, ask it, or don't ask it.
Do you have a question regarding her testimony?
That is a question, I'm, I'm saying, so, so now you have the driveway, the way I'm looking at it, which looks great, my question is, from a planner's point of view and the impact on the neighborhood, is that structure with everyone that lives in it required to use that? Or, like some I've seen in the neighborhood, when they get that, they then put a lot of cars on the street anyway, and that would really negatively affect a very, very challenged area, which is Second, people now walking all the way from the beach.
That could be true of anyone living in the neighborhood, they could mention...
I know, and that's why the city is such a mess.
It's not a valid question.
Thank you, that's why the city is such a mess. This weekend, people who live here, like myself, we park...
You're testifying, you're testifying, you can't do that right now.
Oh, testifying, okay.
You'll get your chance to make...
So can I, can I ask, as a planner, impact on the neighborhood, when, you got the variance to do the driveway that way?
No, no variances have been approved, there's an existing driveway there.
It wasn't, it wasn't required, no.
There is nothing approved yet.
Okay, so, so there were some other variances to build the structure, and how many people are going to live there, whatever...
No, we have not approved anything yet, Mr. Minoli.
Oh, you haven't approved it?
No.
Are we on the way to... How many units are, are permitted? Three units are permitted on this site.
Right. Right.
That's why we're doing it. Use variances as required.
Okay. Well, that's a good thing. So then, like you said, most of the variances weren't needed, but you still need a few more, I guess.
I don't understand what you're asking.
Well, are you done with variances on this?
What do you mean by "done"?
I don't, I don't... I was, I was talking to the planner, and the, the lawyer brought up variance, so I don't, I don't know what we're dealing with here. Aren't we dealing with the impact that the planner planned relative to the neighborhood?
Are you, do you have a question for Ms. Gregory?
Yeah, just...
What is your question?
So what I'm saying is, as a planner, coming up with a good alternate plan for that driveway,
does it, is it required that it's used as you planned it? Meaning, the people who live there?
I, I, it's not a valid question, Mr. Minoli.
It's not a valid?
No.
But, um, I think, I, I'd like to personally explain that.
No, don't do it. You know, Mr. Karras...
No, I, I don't think it's a...
Let's not, let's not overreact.
No.
Let's just say...
Are you saying...
If they don't wanna use the driveway, they don't have to use it. That's all. That's what usually goes on. I mean, I, I'm right on Grand Avenue. I see that.
Mr. Minoli, this is testimony. I'm sorry. So you, we're here, you're here to ask for planner questions, and we have not approved any variances for this property. We are in the process of considering those variances at this moment.
Can I ask the planner on the driveway?
You've asked the planner whether the driveway is meant to be used. Yes, it's meant to be used. Isn't that what you're getting at?
Yes, and then I had a question that would finish my questioning, which is, is part of that plan that somehow, in your conditions...
That is not possible, no.
It can't. I know, you can't require something.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minoli. Is anyone else from the general public for Ms. Gregory's testimony? All right, I'll close the public session.
I have no further witnesses. I just want to sum up briefly on this, and I'll finish up. If I may?
Please, Mr. Karras.
We've been here for quite a number of sessions on this application. You've seen the plans go through various iterations. And in fact, we reduced it after taking into account the board's comments and concerns. We reduced from four to three. We've reduced the size of the building. The parking has been changed based upon some arrogant comments from the board to try to get it on one side with one curb cut. When you look at this building, I think everybody can appreciate the amount of work that went into it. It's a beautiful building. As the board had indicated previously, this is a very visible area. The house that has been there for quite a long period of time is in such condition that it can't be, unfortunately, saved at that testimony.
Not to mention all the ghosts behind it.
I don't even wanna go into that, but, uh, we're aware of that. Um, what you see is a beautiful project. A lot of work went into it, both by my clients, professionals, and also the board in taking their time to consider this application, make certain recommendations in terms of how to make this a better project. And I think what we've come up with in the end really is a beautiful project. I think it is going to benefit the area, the neighborhood. And I think it fits well within Asbury Park and the, uh, the elements of the zoning code. Because that, I would ask the board to approve the application, grant the variance relief that is being requested, and, uh, take a...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karras.
So, Jack, are we up to the public comment section?
Okay. So I, I'll make a motion to open it up for public comment.
May I get a second?
I'll second.
Please, hi. Please come up, state your name, and this is... This is a chance to comment on this application. You're fine right there, Mr. Baumgartner.
They're very fine. Please, right hand. Please wear a firm testimony gift during this presentation. It will be the two fellows who have done nothing but choose.
Yes, I do. Uh, Warner Baumgartner, city historian. And just by way of a, a brief explanation as to what that is, I am a city official. I am the official city historian, and it's my mission and my duty to advocate for the protection and preservation of Asbury Park's architectural and historic heritage. So I have, I have no skin in the game as to how this turns out other than doing what's best for Asbury Park.
Don't you think we have that same purview, Mr. Baumgartner?
I would hope so, but sometimes I feel like I'm treated with a little bit of disdain in my mission. So I just thought I'd throw that in. Um, first of all, Asbury Park is one of the oldest pre-planned communities in the United States. It could arguably be the first planned community in the United States. The entire city, the east side, was laid out prior to a single building being built. And one of those standard design requirements is a 25-foot setback. 25-foot setbacks have existed on the entire east side of Asbury Park since the entire town was designed before a building was even built. This was an extremely significant design, an extremely significant design element of Asbury Park. I'm very concerned that variances are being potentially given for setback violations. And I'm very concerned about how the testimony went at prior meetings as to how the setbacks were measured on the block. The buildings on this block all predate, like, 1900. There may be some in the early 1900s, most predate 1900. They all have 25-foot setbacks, as measured in the traditional manner, to the foundation wall, the primary wall of the building. The porch always extends beyond the setback into the front yard, and is typically an open porch made of wood. It's been that way since 1871. So to testify that the code allows an average to be taken from various points in different buildings is actually incorrect. The code says the predominant setback prevails. It says nothing about an average setback. It talks about a predominant setback. So if there are six buildings on the block, and four or five of them exhibit 25-foot setbacks, that is the required setback, 25 feet, regardless of whether the two outliers are less or more. Taking an average is incorrect, and that testimony was incorrect. So why is it 25 feet? It's for view corridors. It's so that people in adjacent properties can sit on their porch and not look at the side of a building. When you put a building into the setback, you're, the neighbor is looking at a blank wall. This is an extremely important design of Asbury Park. It is open view corridors down the blocks, from one porch to the next porch to the next porch. An open view corridor. That's what's significant. That is the most significant design element of the design of Asbury Park. Second design element is the actual architectural styles. Now, this building is probably too big and too dense to meet the design requirements in the standards. They were brought to your attention by your staff. The design standards are minimal. This is a historic district in three different categories. It's a locally designated historic district called the Library Square District. It's a state-designated historic district called the Turn of the Century District. And it's a zoning historic district by virtue of the fact of its P.O. zoning. All of those indicate that the neighborhood surrounding this is a significant architectural resource. And those standards are the design requirements in zoning. The bare minimums have not been met here. It requires the design to be similar to the predominant architectural style in the neighborhood. At minimum, it states, at minimum, an open porch made of wood consistent with adjacent properties or on the same block front. This does not meet that requirement. So as far as those two elements, those two elements alone, I would suggest that this is a seriously non-conforming property. I'm sure it could be made into one, but the setbacks, number one, is the grossest violation of the character, historic character of Asbury Park. And number two, the architectural style and design is the second. For those reasons, I would suggest you send this back to the drawing board. I know that that's not desirable from the applicant's point of view, but you're duty-bound to do what's best for Asbury Park and what the code says, and what the architectural history and setback history is in Asbury Park. So this building, if it's allowed, will project out toward the street on two frontages further than any building on those block fronts. That's extremely detrimental. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Anyone else from the general public for comment on this application?
Can I just respond briefly to his comments? Um, just that the board, I think...
Mr. Karras.
I think there should be clarification in terms of...
I think the board will take into own consideration.
Please raise your right hand.
Again?
Please wear a firm testimony gift during this presentation. It will be the two fellows who have done nothing but choose.
I do. Ernest Minoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Department 5, The Asbury Park, New Jersey.
Thank you.
So I can comment?
Yes.
Doesn't have to be a...
No, doesn't have to be any questions in regards to a testimony.
It's kind of like, just how I feel.
How you feel.
Okay. And Mr. Baumgartner mentioned skin in the game, is a historian. He also lives in the area. I, I live in the area. I'm a homeowner here for 12 years. And I can't agree with him enough. I, I know a lot of the codes he's talking about. I totally agree. So I'm not gonna spend any time on that. But what I will say is that I don't think that we also consider the height of the building. Isn't this building higher than the other one? Any former structure? I'm not allowed to ask a question?
Just comments.
Okay. Well, it looks higher. So I, I, I think we're dealing with density issues, encroaching on setback, height issues, uh, added character design for the neighborhood, which may violate codes. And in my opinion, living not too far, if you put down Grand where I live, uh, when, when you ride by, this thing is gonna kind of like change the whole character of the neighborhood. I totally agree again with Mr. Baumgartner that, look, if, if somebody wanted to make this look almost identical to what's the houses around it, which is the key factor, not something from First Avenue, it was testified, whatever avenue, what's relative is there. We see too much of this where precedents are set like this. And once, once one happens, now that's gonna set the way for...
There is no precedent in zoning.
What?
There is no precedent. We take every application on its own merits. There is no precedent when it comes to zoning applications and approvals.
I don't mean it exactly. What I mean is...
It's what you said.
Once one approval is made to encroach on...
That does, that has no bearing on what we do up here. Precedent has no bearing on what we do.
Okay, well, then, really?
Correct.
Well, wait, you're...
Every application is unto itself reviewed.
Okay. Instead, instead of like triple teaming, Lee, can I make a response to what Mr. Lewis just said? Okay. Mr. Baumgartner eloquently and professionally described to you that the code dictates what the neighbors have to have thrust upon them. This is gonna block their view in plain English, and it's horrific. They're not here. I don't, I don't know why. I would be here, but those homes next to that encroachment and to the area setback?
The home directly to the north is sitting back about 100 feet. Do you know that?
Well, no. What? Now, wait, Ms. Lewis. Now you're gonna ask me if I know the neighborhood? I traveled down that street every morning.
I know. You're testifying, you're testi...
You know, you know, you really, you know... And again, what Mr. Baumgartner said is, it's very dis, disheartening to sit here and be demeaned constantly by the board.
Demeaning you, I'm just correcting you.
But I talk to people outside. Every resident in this town, every homeowner feels like, if you're willing to go there, be ready to get it socked to you. And that's how we feel. And, and you don't just do it one-on-one. You team up on people. You know, you turn to your partner, and then two people get you. And then the lawyer gets up, and then the architect gets in, and the city lawyer jumps in. So people are afraid to come here for the, how they feel when they leave. They feel dejected because we're homeowners here. A lot of the people you're talking to, professionals and stuff, don't even live here. I know the whole board lives here, but I bet the rest of the people don't live here. It's my comment. Hello?
He has a right to make his comments.
Thank you. So I, I totally agree with Mr. Baumgartner's professional as well as being a homeowner resident in the general area on the east side. Not only that, I think that there could have been more things that he could have gone into as to height and, and, and just conforming to what is Asbury's character. And I hope that, that this group is caused to go back and fit it exactly as Mr. Baumgartner described as a historian so that Asbury will continue to look like Asbury. And another comment I'd like to make as a comparison, if you ever look at Ocean Grove, Ocean Avenue, at one point, they allowed someone to build a modernistic structure. I don't know what it is. It looks like a, like the Colosseum. They built it right next to beautiful homes, an inch away. And when you go there and you look at it, it, it so doesn't fit. It disturbs everyone's everything. And the way this is designed, it does the same thing. Because when you're riding down the street, the view corridor is not just for the neighbors. It's so that people riding down could get that open feel I probably wanted it to be. Wide streets for a reason, set-back porches for a reason, wood for a reason. That's the character of the city. And you can duplicate it, but you don't have to create a new structure like this. And I'm gonna say, I think that a lot of this was planned to increase density, which is another negative factor. In other words, people are willing to infringe on code if they have the right talent to persuade you based on they want always increased density. Now, I don't know. I think this was what a, what was it originally? Four family, what, one professional office?
Just continue.
Comment, I can't ask a... Okay. I, I believe that's what it was. And, and it's still also vague. It seems like, in the summation here, that you may have left the door open that after, if this were to be approved, which I don't think it should be, like Mr. Baumgartner, that maybe somebody will come back and say, well, now I wanna make the professional office. I want it to have a sidewalk and a driveway or, or whatever. So I think it should send back and meet every single requirement to the T. And I thank you, Mr. Baumgartner, for your expertise. And I feel the same way you do every time I come up here. Just respect me.
I, I'm sorry you feel that way, Mr. Minoli. I try to respect everyone.
But you perpetuate it every week. One lawyer's not jumping in, the city lawyer's jumping in. I mean, we just are like, really? It's hard to hear.
Anyone else for the general public for a comment session? All right. I'll make a motion to close public session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, maybe we can get some comments from the board and what they feel and are thinking about this particular application.
So, first, I have to say that it is remarkable to me where we started and where we have ended up, and while there is an increase in density on this property, I do believe that it's within a reasonable amount, and that the mitigating impacts that have been, mitigating treatments that have been made, moving the mass of the building into the front yard setback to make sure that the curb cuts could be maintained on second, the single curb cut could be maintained on Second Avenue to increase the safety of the bike lane and the intersection at Grand, as well as having all the cars going in and out through a single driveway meant that there was no street parking eliminated. The architectural character, while we have discussed that it is not necessarily an amalgamation of other styles in the immediate range, it does fit into the character of the broad Victorian umbrella of, that it makes as very well-known, and it is a contemporary interpretation of it because it is a contemporary use.
I would agree with that. Any other comments from the board?
Donna, I have another question for you. I know your firm was part of the reexamination, I know it's not adopted yet, do you know what the reasoning was behind removing the FAR?
Yes, it's in my report, and although the professional indicated that without an FAR requirement, their project would not be bound to have this problem, they also would not be allowed to have three family house or three units on this property. So it's kind of a, you know, Chinese menu approach that they're taking, so although the master plan reexam recommends the elimination of FAR standards, it also recommends this property could be resoned to R2, which would limit into two family house. So we kind of have to take that FAR recommendation, you know, with a grain of salt in the proposed zoning recommendations, proposed zoning amendments that come out of the master plan reexam that we're working on right now. There still would be an FAR requirement for multifamily housing. There would be at this location.
Thank you. I think that's my biggest concern with this application, the setbacks, although I wish it was setback more, I agree with the planner that it is a very wide right-of-way. Point eight is still, that's a, that's a large FAR, point five is allowed, and point seven was there already. I don't know. Eric, what do you think? You're the other planner.
I told you what I think.
About the FAR.
Well, I think that the point seven is existing, and I don't think it's a huge increase over what is, and the site has been vacant for low these 30 years.
At least.
You know, and seeing it returned to productive, active use, I think is an incentive to us to improve the neighborhood, to, you know, see it be used. Property values will rise. And I don't think that, I am not of the mind on this particular application, to your point, Russell, on this particular application, I do not think that the increase in FAR is an egregious grab.
I agree, this is a particularly challenging and difficult piece of property, where it's located, the size, how it's laid out. And in balance, looking at what was proposed originally and where we are now, it is a completely different project, and the applicant has shown every effort to comply with this board's wishes.
Except the FAR. FAR didn't even change last time, from the last application, the last site plan to this site plan.
But it has from the beginning.
Do you remember what the beginning was? I know kids...
It had a whole nother unit. There was four townhouses.
Yeah. I believe it was 110 on the mission.
So right off the bat, that's a 40% decrease. Right, did I get that right? Yes.
It's not ideal.
I just think it's really big. I mean, the right-of-way helps, Grand is huge, but...
Grand and Second.
What is the right-of-way of Second?
It's also 100 feet.
That's my concern.
Valid. It's very valid. Any other comments from the board?
I think the, I kind of agree with the historian about trying to conserve the building, and I wish they can save the building, but unfortunately, I think it's not possible. I love the history of Asbury Park, that was one of the reasons I moved into town, and I always passed that building. As a matter of fact, I almost tried to buy the lot right next to it, and I always asked questions about that building. It was a beautiful building, but what I see, what is proposed right here, I think the only thing that I can do is just increase property value around the block or in the area. That's my comment.
Thank you, Christopher. And from my perspective, I think the applicant, Mr. Valario and Mr. Walker, you've made a lot of efforts to try to comply with all the changes that we've made right from the start. I think you've been very accommodating to those changes, and you've made a lot of efforts in that area, and decreased a lot of the initial variance requests. I personally, personally, I would have loved the beautiful old Victorian that was there, but while it does have some elements of the Victorian, I do appreciate the design now, and I do like it. So, that being said, do we have a motion? I would make a motion to approve the application. I'll second it.
Eric Galfo.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Timothy Slick.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Christopher Adeline.
Yes.
Application approved.
Thank you, Mr. Karas, thank you, Mr. Valario, thank you, Mr. Walker, and Ms. Gregory.
Now, you know what, should have mentioned a couple of conditions. We had a big fat certificate. Sorry.
Did you certify the red?
Yes, that's all been taken care of. Yes, two new members, their certifications are on record, they listened to all the transitors of all the prior years, examining the exhibits. A couple of, just some cleanup. There was a discussion about the downsides, I'll put that in a resolution. I know it's not actually part of the formal resolution that was made.
And the compliance with the stormwater management as well.
Yes, adjacent to report compliance, standard, permissions of everything, okay? And the doms comment about something about the site plan had not yet been adjusted in the beginning, and that's...
The consistency between the architectural plans are the same.
Yes, and that's it.
And the landscape plan.
Landscape, yes. What about the landscape? That's in the engineering.
And it had the...
Compliance with the planners, comments regarding the landscape plan. And whatever the standards are, it's a connection to fees and that. I think we should amend the resolution to include that, because you already voted on it, and I'm sticking this in. So would anyone mind, let's just redo it real quickly, have Eric read the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the application with the conditions.
Okay. And who second?
I did, I'll second.
Christopher Adeline?
Yes.
And we do the votes.
Eric Galfo.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Christopher Adeline.
Yes.
Application approved.
I do want to thank the board, you put a lot of time, a lot of consideration into this, and contrast, I think the board did a wonderful job.
Thank you, Mr. Karas.
Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.